Oh, awesome, perfect.
On what?
Pay your taxes.
What? I had to cut that out of the video now.
All right, we call the order the November 10, or November 10 Village Board Meeting. Mr. Byers, please read the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have enough. And the one in the meeting room was too tall for this room, so I scrambled and found that one and did have to...
Appreciate you doing that.
Appreciate it, Eric.
All right, first we have public comments. So at this time, I will open up the floor to anyone who would like to speak this evening.
Hello, I'm Eric Reynolds. I had the opportunity to go to the planning board meeting this last week and Thursday of last week. I have to say, I'm embarrassed to be in Webster and a resident of Webster after seeing that travesty. The planning board conspired to extort a citizen to force him to put up money, put up bond, without, by threatening him with removing his site plan approval, which they have no ability to do whatsoever. And that gentleman agreed to that in order to not go to court and not sue this administration because he didn't want to spend the money on that. But I believe that the village board should look into this because it is absolutely a travesty. And the fact that the attorney went along with it, I was aghast. He was so close to malpractice that he's the only one that stopped it because he went into an executive session and stopped them from doing it.
They stopped him from doing what?
From trying to go forward with that. I'm sure that he went into executive session to discuss possible litigation. And there certainly would have been litigation should they have removed his site plan approval because they have no ability to do that under the law. Thank you.
I was at the same meeting.
I know you were.
And I absolutely 100% disagree with your interpretation.
I'm sure you would because you brought up the issue. You started the issue.
I did my say, so here we go. Anyone else this evening?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
Go ahead. You got the camera, go ahead. I'm just a rookie.
All right. Well, thank you for, Peter Elder, 59 Dunning Avenue. I can't put that camera towards me. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Recently, I received information through a foil that the lawsuit filed about the STP sewer treatment plan has cost the village over $13,000 to date. And that just seems like a huge expense. It seems that discontinuing composting only costs the village about $40,000 annually but has foisted this onerous litigation cost on the village. I assume that the resolution discontinuing composting would have been enough to satisfy the plaintiffs, but I think the village's hasty resolution and tacit admission that composting contributed adversely to those plaintiffs' quality of life has allowed the issue to fester and the residents cost even more money. I just want to mention, I've mentioned this before, that composting is a good green activity that helps the environment. The village was at the cutting edge of good environmental stewardship with that practice. Now we have taken a step backwards. This lawsuit validates that there was no advantage in discontinuing the composting. The plaintiffs costing the village money augmented by the unwise discussions that were had with them did not ameliorate financial liability to the village. I am disappointed with the lawsuit. I'm disappointed with the result. I don't know what you can do about it now, but I would ask you to take a close look at it because I don't know what kind of costs are still being, are going to be actually, you know, taken against the village on this. With $13,000 now and no end in sight, where is the actual end to this? Is there a point at which the board will say, you know, it's enough, we have to cut our losses and settle it? Is there a point at which the plaintiffs will just withdraw because they can't get any more from the village? I'm just very concerned about this. I don't see where it ends. And I also don't see where the village has any leverage in making it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening?
I don't want to stand in front of everybody, but I'll talk back here. My name's Mike Yanis. I reside at the Seasons Trail. I'm part of the Scenic Village Homeowners Association. Unfortunately, I wasn't at last week's meeting. I don't know what verbatim what took place and what law this gentleman's talking about, but I am here to thank the board for their time in looking into the efforts of the engineer that I hired to oversee that project and take a look at what has to be done. Our biggest concern is the letter of credit by the builder, okay? AKA sponsor, builder, whatever you want to say, developer. And also, the letter of credit has to be submitted, I believe, within 90 days?
Correct.
Of that meeting, correct?
Correct.
And if and after 90 days, something happens to such builder or he vacates and just leaves and says, "I'm not doing nothing," what happens to credit? Does the credit go from the village and the village complete the job? Or does the credit come to the homeowners and we complete the job with our engineer?
It's my understanding that the developer does not come forward with the letter of credit within 90 days, that the planning board will be taking action regarding the site plan of the developer. That's my understanding from that meeting. Also, the engineering analysis that was done will be taken into consideration by this board as it relates to the letter of credit. As of right now, we're planning to have a meeting. I have asked that at least two members of this board attend the letter of credit meeting to discuss exactly what entails a letter of credit. So there will be a couple of people from the planning board and a couple of people from this board. Will has sent an email to the members of this board describing what is entailed in the letter of credit. But your engineering analysis that was done of that, of the roadway, which has been left basically barren for nine years, has deteriorated to the point where the analysis has said that the bider will probably be required to be replaced. I will be looking at that part very hard and I will encourage this board to do the same so that that road is put in the condition that it was meant to be put in with respect to that letter of credit. Now, the letter of credit, my understanding, is presented to us by the developer. The developer is the one that offered up the letter of credit. At no time was any threats or extortion, in my opinion.
Except for removing his site plan.
Mr. Reynolds, you're out of order. Please be quiet. At no time, in my opinion, based upon what I heard, was anyone on the planning board attempting to extort this developer. But as far as the letter of credit goes, to your question, we will be looking at that letter of credit to ensure that that roadway is properly re-done.
Correct, and we're just making sure that it gets completed before fall of '17, 2017, that way.
Right, they gave him an extension for paving season through 2017. So he has another year. And he was just issued another building permit. So that's what, I think that the planning board was very liberal in giving him an additional year. I know they had talked about holding into just this asphalt season, but they did extend it for a year or so. I apologize for all that you guys have had to go through for a year. I know it's been a struggle. The lights did get put up. That was one thing that happened.
Yes, and we have two homes up for sale now.
Right.
And if any more go up, it's going to be a zombie-type atmosphere. I don't think the village wants that.
Absolutely not.
And thank you again for all your help.
Sure, absolutely.
And your support, appreciate it. If there's anything I can do, please stop in the country.
Well, I appreciate what you have to say.
And I would also like Jake involved with the construction project with Bob Kiefer and oversee the project. They did a fine job to Kettleburger. Absolutely unbelievable. My hat's off to his staff and those guys.
They do a great job every day.
I drive up and down it three or four times a day, believe me. I've seen all the work they're doing. So my hat's off to them. Thanks again, Jake. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Yanis, great to see you coming in, sir.
Good evening, sir. Thanks again.
Anyone else? I'm sorry.
I think I'm somebody else. Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street. I had a couple of questions on the North Avenue project. Number one, when I went to look at the project, one of the gentlemen that was involved in it practically refused to let me look at it. Every time I walked to the table, he was in my face. The major comment from him was, "This is wonderful. We're not going to have to pay only the small amount for this. The state's going to pay for the rest of us, so it's not going to cost us anything." I mean, that way of thinking is totally contrary to me to begin with because last I knew, we all paid state taxes. I mean, maybe some of us are related to the president-elect that don't pay any taxes, but I do pay many different kinds of taxes to the state of New York. So the theory that we're not paying for it, first of all, is erroneous. The second thing I had, besides being blocked from seriously looking at it because this person was constantly in my face, when I did make a couple of comments, I got very negative comments back. When I tried to write down comments, they were practically non-accepted. I finally gave up and threw my comments in the trash because nobody wanted to hear. Some of the designs on this project are ridiculous. As I pointed out, where you expect your snowplow to make 90-degree turns where we jag our sidewalk and move it out to the edge of the road rather than have it, a space between the road and the sidewalk so that, in the one particular case, the sidewalk is moved out to the road so that a property owner can put parking within the right-of-way. Now, in most places, parking is not allowed in the right-of-way except at the curb, but this property owner now has parking which overlaps the current sidewalk. So we're going to put the sidewalk out so people are now walking at the edge of the road where there would be no real curb height theme and protect them so that this guy can have people driving in and out in front of him or over him, however it may be. Another point I'd like to make is for the last 30 years or better, the village has asked everybody that put up a project in the village to use a standard-style lighting so that we all look alike and the village has some uniformity to it. This project, they've decided to change all the streetlights to a different design, which means they won't match anything else in the village. And the comment was, "Oh, we're going to change in a few years. The village is going to pay to change the lights on Main Street, so they'll match the new project." So now we're planning to spend more village money to match something else. Why doesn't it match the village? I mean, these lights will not even match the lights in the Veterans Park. So are we going to have to change those too? Are we going to have to change lights? I mean, we've been at planning board meetings for 30 years telling contractors, "When you put up a project, match us." Now we're telling them, "They're wrong. We're going to change." I mean, why don't we stick with a standard style in the village? And at one point, the sidewalk is being moved out to the edge of the road, putting more pedestrians at risk, so we can put up a sign. Can't signs be moved easier than sidewalks? Can't safety of the pedestrian be better? And moving sidewalks out to the edge of the road means that Jake's going to have to plow during a snowstorm, send the sidewalk plow down every time the state truck or the town truck goes by plowing the state road. Jake's going to have to go replow the sidewalk. Because where are they going to put the snow? They're putting it directly on the sidewalk, not in that green space between the sidewalk and the road. With the sidewalk out at the edge of the road, I was told at the meeting, "Well, they can plow like they do on Gordon. Sometimes they go along and lift the plow and plow the sidewalk with the wing. They lift the wing plow up high enough to plow the sidewalk." Last I knew, Jake didn't plow North Avenue. The town does it with, under contract for the state. That's a state highway. So is Jake going to have to make a special plow run with the plow truck to wing that back off the sidewalk? Why are we designing and changing it to eliminate some of the pedestrian safety, to put them out right at the edge of the road and making more work for the DPW and more expense down the road maintaining two different style lights within the village or changing all the lights to match that? Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
I know we're all wise, but I assume there'll be no answer. There never is from this board.
Anyone else this evening? All right. We'll move into village board business at this time. First off, we have a resolution to approve the minutes of the October, what is it?
No.
October 27th board meeting. Questions, additions, deletions? All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Polito?
I'm standing, I wasn't here.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Canel?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Would like to vote separately on voucher number 29403 for the amount of $118.36. The invoice is to be paid to videographer, Mr. Tom, I cannot pronounce his last name. So I would like to entertain a, does anyone have any questions on the other bills? I reviewed the bills, I reviewed the questions I had with Jake.
No, I reviewed them.
Okay. So excluding that one voucher, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second to pay the bills.
Why are we excluding them?
We're excluding that one because as I sent emails out and as I spoke about at the last workshop meeting, this videographer did not have board approval to come in and to be paid for this taping of this village board meeting. Therefore, I would like to vote separately on that so that I don't have to vote no on all the bills, so I have an opportunity to vote yes on all the other bills and vote separately on that bill. So I'll make a motion to pay all the bills with the exception of voucher number 29403 at this time. Right. Yeah, I'll make a motion. One second.
Trustee Polito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Canel?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next is the invoice, voucher number 29403, as I just described. And I delineated my feelings on this and opinions in the emails. And I did speak about it at the last board meeting. So at this time, I will entertain a motion in a second to pay this bill. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Polito?
Aye.
Mayor Canel?
No.
Motion passed.
Dan, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Jake, did you have a chance to look at the cap and overtime report?
Yes. Is there any questions?
There's still a lot of leaves out there, Jake.
There are a whole lot of leaves out there, boo.
By the sound of the wind, there are going to be fewer on the trees, so.
Hopefully it blows them out of downtown because, boy, they accumulate down there on sidewalks.
I was down at the town today and I told them I'd try to get mine out to Main Street so they can blow down past Villatero and make it pick up more.
All right, I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right, Christina, did you want to talk about the proposed, I know you sent an email about that, but we haven't had a discussion about it, the funding, proposed funding for the cell tower. I know you and Morrison, you wanted to talk about that, so.
Well, just bare numbers, pretty much. Based on our financial statements issued by Freed Maxick, our fund balance at 531 is $1,326,000. The village can afford to build the cell tower without bonding or putting any bands on it. Without, the fund balance percentage of the current budget is, we're at 49%. If we decide, if we build the cell tower and fund it, that will cause our fund balance to go down to 44%. So it's a good move to actually do that.
And we're not going to lock the taxpayers into a significant amount of money.
And double the cost of the building of the tower.
Right.
Yeah.
You said it goes down to 44?
Right.
Yes.
You had in your email that it would be about 35?
That was about a month or two ago before I had final financial statement figures from Freed Maxick. If you'll review, I had sent you a couple of days ago the financials from Freed Maxick and our current fund balance, unassigned fund balance is $1,326,000. So based on that number and our current budget, the percentage is 49 before we fund the cell tower.
Right. And it naturally went up because we don't include the sewer.
That's exactly why it went up.
And also, our revenue was higher than planned last year, right? And our expenditures were less than the budget for last year also. So I appreciate that. And I would imagine that the next workshop, we can discuss it a little more. And as things move forward, we will make the appropriate transfer of monies to pay for that. But I wanted to briefly have Christina explain where we are, what options we have, and what would be the, from a fiscal standpoint, the proper way to go. And based upon the information that we just received from you, Jake, I think, you know, it's fortunate that it is as high as it is because this is an unintended or unplanned expenditure that we're going to have to go through with respect to what you're going to be talking about in a few minutes. So, you know, the additional revenues and the, and the, and the lack of expenditures last year really helped as far as this goes because that's a significant amount of money to do this, what you're going to be discussing here in a couple of minutes. So, thank you for that, Christine, I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Any questions?
Will we be establishing that budget line sometime in December?
We actually have a cell tower line already, which we set up.
So we're going to function to fund it?
We have, well, just initially for the engineering and the startup ones, but yes.
We have a budget line, who's at the transfer money?
We will, we will have to do a budget modification to fund that line, most definitely.
All right, Jake. Do you have the floor, sir?
Well, first item on there is the STP digester repair. And I can give a, set out a narrative on the emergency project, really. Just to sketch everybody up and remind everybody, a couple of years ago, we did an engineering planning study focused primarily on the solids handling at the STP and on the, on the energy concentration measures that we might take at the STP. Part of that was to investigate the digesters. In order to check the digesters, internal structure of the digesters, we recorded cleaning, I know it was down, and entering to the digesters. And at that time, the expenses were around $200,000 to clean up the digesters. Since the recommendations of the studier where it was heading was to line the digesters, the decision was made at that time, after consultation with a structural engineer as well, to do core samples to, I guess, double-check assumptions that were being made in regards to digesters. We dug down in certain areas around them, did core samples of the digester concrete based on the age of the concrete and the thickness of the concrete. What they were exposing, or what they were assuming is that the digesters are really in pretty decent shape. The concrete from the 1930s and the little one from the 60s or 50s.
60s.
Not 60s, the older one, yeah, or the bigger one.
Right.
There was a little different mix in the concrete back then. There were really, one of them, I don't have it with me, the recorder with me, because I believe it's 9,000-pound concrete, which is really good compressive strength on the concrete. So the decision at that time was to clean it one time and then do it when we're going to do the project and do the relining. So in one sense, it's not an completely unplanned or unforeseen exercise, but the timing's not wonderful. It didn't hold out for us. And for lack of a better term, it's constipated. There's a big plug in the bottom of it and it's not allowing us to transfer solids like we need to transfer solids. And just like, we don't feel good if we have that condition, the digester doesn't feel good when it has that condition. So we have to take action to get that plug removed, if you will, and to clean out the digester. Part of that is to go in there and remove the cover. The best, most efficient ways to get the cover removed off of it, we're working with, we've got close mother, local companies to be able to do this. Make this emergency action, really, to be able to get our, this critical piece of equipment working again, or critical process. And the biggest portion of it, as you can see, I think from the break down there, it's about $76,000, I think it was.
72.
72, excuse me, was the disposal cost. And that's, you know, that's an estimated disposal cost based on, we're going to spin out as much as we can in this interview. But everything, this baggage truck there, we have to get it broken down enough to get it pumped out. And then when it gets dropped, and it's all based on percent solids. So we've got 8,000 gallons and it's 15% solids. And 4,000 gallons and it's 5% solids. It's going to be currently dry tons and 5% as you would have in the 15%. So when we do the calculations and figure out what the dry ton is based on how much solids in the material, that's how they, that's how they end up charging, it's $430 for a dry ton when you take it over. So it's a uniform, you know, if you send it over something liquid and pretty thin, you're not paying as much as if you sent it over something thicker and vice versa, so.
Jake, would you, I apologize for interrupting you, but as part of your explanation, I know that, could you just explain to the board the, how this has negatively impacted the town's sewer plant with the BODs? Was that, did this play into that at all? Is my understanding from, my interpretation from me that we had, that it did partially, a little bit maybe, or no?
It's tough to tell. We did have some months with higher BODs. As we're investigating, we've had some sort of flip around. And when you can't control it as much as you need to, you don't, you don't have the control. And when you make changes, they're not as reactive or responsive because you can't say, "All right, I changed this." And so this happened. Because that's what really running the plan. and so this happened. Because that's what really running the plant, it's, it's, it's almost like being a nurse, I guess, is you're watching and seeing how the patient or how the plant's responding to it, to what you're doing.
But this might pay, because the whole system's not working as it's supposed to work, you can't really, as you're saying, you can't really do a proper diagnostics?
Yeah, that's tough.
But this, because this is not working as it is supposed to, that may be having an impact on it.
And it's tough to say. We have done research, we're looking into those points and numbers, and in the meantime, our BOD has gone down.
Right.
And the BOD is a biological oxygen demand and it's a measure of how much organic material is in the effluent or in the waste stream. Those numbers have gone down, which indicates an improved efficiency in the plant somewhere in the process.
Right.
But without, I guarantee studying doesn't make a change, and looking at it doesn't make a change, but it's a, it's a living organism. The plant really is a, it's basically, our plant takes natural, natural cleansing action that would take place in a stream, you know, a bio streamer. So, it consolidates it into a small footprint. That's why we have what's called a tripling filter plant. Some plants are an activated sledge plant. Our, our, this is a real ten thousand foot view. Our flow comes into the plant, it's, you know, there's something for grit removal and, and bar screen recognizable, as they call them, to take things that you can take out of the flow out. Then it goes into a primary tank where things settle or float. Those, that item, those, that material that settles or float is what gets sent to the digester. That's the solids material. The liquid material, or with suspended solids, and it continues on and goes to a tripling filter. And that's a big, if you're, we're down there, it's a big dome, or a big round vessel with a dome. That's full of rocks, that's all it is. And they, they, they charge them work and they call it media, which rocks. And it's rocks, just like if you go into a creek and there's a lot of, a lot of organic material that's fed into the creek, the rocks are slippery. That's what, this has got a biofilm or a bio solid, or biomass on, on the rocks. It's growing. It's living organisms that the guys will take samples of and look at under the microscope to see what's living on there. That, basically, we triple the flow from our primary tanks over that and we're feeding bugs. And by feeding the bugs, they're taking the solids out of the water. That flow then goes to a secondary clarifier and then it's off onto the plant. And then our digester also, and it's not, the digester takes, get the solids, it doesn't really, it's a long answer, I said it's going to be short, doesn't really go to the plant, but as the solids are broken down into the digester, liquid's what's left. That's called supernate and that goes back to the head of the plant, goes through the process. Everything is interconnected. It's just like a body, you know, it's like a living organism or a living body, so. But they have, so, yes, I think, I'm set to.
And they get it for a while ago.
But, yeah, so, it's, we've, we've looked, and this is, you know, purpose and we kind of just discussed everything. And here's the components and what we've got for, for doing days. It's a parado, so what we had about years ago, even kind of on an emergency basis, still, I think, about fifty thousand dollar savings. It's, something's going to have to get done. And then when we do complete the digester rehab, it's going to be a lot quicker because it's going to be, you know, a fresh clean and hopefully we take care of that soon. It's going to be a, kind of an out and holds it down thing.
Well, what are you projecting?
Doing this?
Yes.
As, as soon as we can. I mean, I've got three contractors. They gave about two weeks to spin up. And then the, the estimate's going to be, the, Jake, clean analysis is going to be about a two-week process.
Okay.
You know, we figure a couple of weeks in between. Obviously, you have a kickoff meeting, coordinate. We're going to start when we're ready to go, start trying to break the material down by forcing air, obviously notification to neighbors and things. But we either force some, big volumes of air through to kind of bust up the material, or we've also been discussing water, which we haven't done, which wouldn't require pulling the top off, or not, excuse me, pulling the, an excess port off. You don't want to introduce air necessarily and have it combined with methane air with the digester gas and seal area if you're experiencing kind of a problem.
Well, the reason I asked that is because the comprehensive study of the sewer treatment plan is still going on, it'd be a very opportune time for them to have an inspection of the inside of that, of those digester tanks, which they didn't have an opportunity to do.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, at least the one tank they had them. So, I just, that's the reason, that was the impetus to that question.
And honestly, I would have liked to do, have done this in the summertime or in, in the, earlier in the fall. This isn't a great time, but it's a necessary, necessary time to do it. And we just, we've got to, you know, we've been milking it along, trying to make sure, trying to, ideally, I would love to have the study done, then say, okay, we're going to go ahead and clean and do this one time, or the relining of the thing, do this one time. That's not, we can't wait. And then, you know, you try, sometimes you can save, sometimes you can't, you gotta pick your battles, I guess.
Sure. Jake, does this project yet get bid?
I think under the emergency provisions, it does not, because we've created a, the situation has developed where we have to take emergency action. I think the emergency actions are excluded from the bidding process. If that wasn't.
Well, you're right.
Yeah, if that wasn't.
I think during your process, that you had numbers from several other, at least one other company.
That, that doesn't.
I understand that.
There's a specific process under the general municipal law.
I understand that.
Public project needs to be bid. It doesn't matter that you make phone calls somewhere and, you know, it's a formal bidding process, John, and you can't understand by phone call.
Hey, Don, I understand exactly the process of bidding, okay? He just explained that under the emergency provisions, that was not necessary. But he did, in fact, right, as an educational tool, make phone calls and talk to us, other people, okay? That's the only comment I'm making. I'm not saying or insinuating that he's doing anything illegal with respect to these, these prices that he has put forward.
I don't think Don was going there either.
No, I wasn't going there either. I just wanted, you know, mainly for people in the audience here, when you're looking to spend, you know, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of public money, generally, on a project, you gotta bid it.
Right. But I don't want people to assume either that Jake didn't look into, you know, other avenues.
How long will it take?
The estimate, I would say probably a month altogether. By the time we start the process kickoff, have the cover removed, they're calling in a couple of weeks, you know, getting everybody coordinated. They're calling for a couple of weeks of actually physically cleaning the tank out. They did a similar, I let them practice on Farmington, on Bloomington, I forget, Bloomfield, I forget what one.
Bloomfield, I think.
They did a similar project down there not that long ago, so, you know, they're kind of familiar. You know, it's, one of them is Gordon Bay or Chamberlain Septic. And they're very familiar with that process and they just did it. So, their, their estimate is a couple of weeks of the actual cleaning out, getting everything out of there. We're obviously going to work, you know, side by side and try to minimize it because it's an hourly, their, you know, here's how much it is an hour, here's their estimated hourly time. So, we're going to work as best as we can to get that, get that out of there.
Will your small digester be able to handle everything?
Um, it's.
Will it have a problem?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have to take what we're, what we can feed it at this time. And you can allow sludge blankets to develop into the primary tanks. Usually, you want to keep about eight inches or so in there. Before we had the centrifuge, those, the, the primary tanks used to get two, two and a half, three feet in the winter time because there's nowhere, once the drying beds were full, there was nowhere to pour them off. So, there is, you know, there is capacity. Is it ideal? No. But it's nothing that hasn't been done before, before we, when we had no option. So, that's something we're, you know, we're working with John, getting that little, getting rock fed over to the little now so we can get.
Right.
He's getting the, the large tank down and trying to start the seed and feed the rocks. Right now, or the little digester, right now, the little, we kind of run them as a primary and secondary digester, it's not their primary tanks. Now, they're looking at running the, little is a primary, right, the secondary one. The secondary is really just, almost like a decan tank where it kind of thickens up. We can run that, run the center, run that material to the centrifuge and then bring the, all the supernate out of it. It doesn't really get raw. And raw is where all the nutrients are and more of the biolog is landing. So, we've got to, you know, transfer a little bit to get it going.
So, thank you for that. So, will this transfer, Christina, in adding into the projected cost of the cell tower?
This is only a loan.
Okay.
The sewer fund will reimburse the general loan.
Okay.
This is only temporary.
All right.
You know, if I could add to that, I can figure out the financial part.
Minor detail, Jake.
Yeah, well, no, I didn't figure that. I looked at the, looked at just one large commercial user, because I know they're, the sewer, the sewer fee and things that went in.
Right.
I looked at the past, since two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and eleven was kind of a higher year because we had, is, when we first started doing an overage fee, and they had more use. We worked on, on water conservation plan and worked on, trying to get to where we had less water to treat. They were using less water. That was a hundred and forty-nine grand. But then after in two thousand and twelve, when these entered, or these water conservation measures came into play, it was forty-four thousand that we had received in overage. And then it's hovered around eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-six, eighty, and then eighty-seven thousand the last, in thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen. This, and these aren't fiscal years, these are calendar years.
Okay.
This year, I've taken what we've gotten, you know, before and after, and then averaged out what we've gotten after and added the last two months in. We're projected to have two hundred and sixty-six thousand from that one user.
Okay.
Because of the volume of water. And then next year, at that same rate, we're projecting about three hundred and forty-seven thousand. So, we're, you know, we're definitely seeing, you know, gains in that regard and frankly, equitable, equitable, yeah, equitability, maybe, is that a word?
Equitability.
All right. Fairness. There's a large portion of our use and now, you know, a large portion of our, of our revenue for it, so.
All right. Christina, do you want to talk to the board about the financial aspect of this, what you're proposing?
This is simply a transfer loan type because there's two funds. Fund balance will front the money via a transfer into the sewer fund. Thus, the sewer fund accepting the money via a transfer in and into their fund balance. If it should turn into a situation where the sewer fund cannot fund that, that would drop our fund balance to thirty-seven percent.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate that as being a problem because the sewer fund's doing all right right now.
Yeah.
So, Chris, when you say it's a loan, are there any kind of rules that the controller has about inter-fund loans, like a set timeframe, it's got to get paid back?
Because it's.
Is it an interest-free loan?
It's not, I'm calling it a loan, but it's not technically a loan because it's going through a transfer in and out. And trans, because we're transferring the money into the sewer fund and this can, may actually even happen during bill pays because, based on the timing of the income from the sewer fund, they only, we only bill quarterly. So, there may be a timeframe where.
I see what you're doing.
Where low. So, the fund, the general fund may have to fund a payroll or fund a bill pay. But then, when they have the money, then they'll turn it right back. So, it's just like a, you know, line of credit, so to speak, but not really.
All right. I just remember in the past, weren't there like loans from the water fund to the general fund?
Uh-huh. I don't want to go that route because I spoke to Laura about this and this is what her direction was.
That's the reason I bring it up. I remember in the past.
Because that was, that was the highly inappropriate, was the words that the state controller used about that.
No, these are just transfers in and out.
Okay.
As long as you ran it all by Laura.
I did. She was the one that gave me the direction.
Great.
Oh, all right.
Because I'm not familiar with the ins and outs either, so she gave me direction.
Well, thank you for doing that. All right, so, we have a budget modification from fund balance to inter-fund transfer out of a hundred and sixty thousand. And then, inter-fund transfer in to the fund balance of a hundred and sixty thousand.
So, the first one there is, zero-one is the general fund. And the second one there is the receipt into the sewer fund, which is oh-four.
Anybody have any questions? Anyone? All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second for the budget modifications at this time.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sir.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Trustee Belkane.
Aye.
Trustee Byers.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Kano.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jake. Christina, thank you very much for what you put into this and laying it out so we can all understand what's, what's going on. I very appreciate it.
The next one is actually Christina's fault as well.
Good.
It's the one we met with.
So, you got thrown under the bus and run over.
That's fine.
Out of the bus's button, back over you.
That's okay.
Listen, I forgot, John, is it Jason or was it Chuck?
Jason is the CPA for Donigan.
Donigan. That's who we met with.
Correct.
I'm terrible with names. But one of the things, North Avenue Project, we, we met and we're discussing, I forget if we talked about it in the last meeting, but we met in regards to North Avenue Project and the funding of it. Basically, in a nutshell, it's, right now, it's slated to be just a little over a million dollar project.
Right.
With the incentive zoning funds that we receive from up north, basically, the village's portion of that is being slated to over twenty-five thousand, I think. However, it's a reimbursable grant rather than a, a year's pot of money goes.
Right. They don't just, here, put this in your checking account. Here's a big check for you.
And I don't want to stop you if I'm incorrect or anything, but there's about a sixty to ninety day lag. You can expect when you're, when you're paying, when you're submitting bills for reimbursement in between the time you pay them and when you get the check back. Right now, they've been simple more engineering things. When it gets into construction, there might be, they've been pretty fast. I think you said about thirty to forty-five days?
Yeah, the longest was forty-five.
And now it can get a little bit longer once, you know, in the summertime when we get into the construction things. And they're going, the bills are going to get huge compared to what we're doing now. And they're, they're going to have a little bit more to look at. So, that extends it out. So, just from a cash flow standpoint, you know, I met with Donigan, Bernie, Bernie Donigan's office, the P, P, whatever. And we're talking about how to fund the project, you know, the best, most advantageous way for the village. And the discussion was a ban.
A ban.
In an amount to be determined. We're thinking around eight hundred?
I think this is.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty.
Eight hundred fifty thousand. To be able, basically, a cash flow, something for one year, ideally with one and a half percent, total cost of the village we've been.
Yeah.
Bond council and initiation, there's not initiation.
Seven grand.
Seven grand. It was under, it was about eighteen thousand altogether, I think. By the time you looked at that cost of that money for that time period, that was fully, you know, that one percent.
Did somebody mention that that, that was reimbursable also?
Yeah, but I spoke to Mr. From Lou Engineers.
Huddeman.
Yeah, Huddeman?
Yeah.
He said, you're going to be capped from this date, how much you're going to get. You don't want to include those kinds of expenses. So, it's really irrelevant, almost.
All right. It's eligible, but we're not going to fall short.
No. There'll be plenty of other things to submit for.
Yeah, right now, it was, it was slightly higher, you know, with the preliminary design, it was slightly higher. They're tightening up those numbers with some of the object, or some of the, some of the options. When they go out to bid, the discussion is they have some of the items, some of the features bid as, as options. So, that we go through the bidding process, we have those numbers there and we can already have that satisfied if we choose to break it up and hey, we're going to do this at a later time.
So, in that meeting, in order to get bond resolution on the agenda for the next meeting or the meeting after that, we have to have seeker. And so, that's what's in front of you right now.
Yep.
So, seeker had not yet been done for the North Avenue Connector Project. So seeker has not yet been done for the North Avenue connector project, it is an unlisted action, so it's not a big deal, but that's what is in front of you now.
Yeah.
And it is my fault.
It's, it's, correction, it's not unlisted, it's a type two.
Type two, okay, sorry.
Type two is what they're, uh, talking to the engineers, Lou Engineers and also Macbeth.
Type two, so it's type two where we don't have to do anything, cause unlisted would be the short form.
Right, unlisted, short form, and it's, yeah, it's type two, the no further, no further reviews required, correction.
And what I had given you was for the, oh, right?
We have the incentive zoning.
Yeah, the June twenty-fourth one, that was the incentive zoning one of the apartment thing, so.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Lancy. Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Director Keno?
Aye.
They're lower, I think, so I think they'd get more beat up than the snowplagues do.
What's your, what's your, what's your plan on the, um?
Pots? Um, we've, actually, John, we're looking, uh, talking to Bill Horace about a week and a half, two weeks probably, um, take those, take those off, and I talked to John about getting, uh, pallets and things like that and him, and I think Fritz was looking at them too, John ended up finding them at Elfco.
Plastic ones.
The plastic ones, his concern is slide them up on the wooden ones and, and mess them up. Um, I think he found them for two dollars a piece?
Two or two fifty.
Two or three.
Oh, I'm not gonna slide more on plastic than they would wood.
It's not a matter of sliding, it's a matter of damaging them, putting them on the wood. We were gonna put cardboard on the wood so it wouldn't scratch so much.
On the bottom. We're afraid, you know, when you have a wooden pallet and you're crossing, the, the pond across them in. Um, please pick up, just wanna remind everybody, it's gonna be delayed, maybe we can update or, I'm trying to talk to Joe about maybe something on the website that might pop up or scroll across. Uh, I've noticed this year, I think, people have forgotten a little bit about leaving them out of the gutters, out of the streets.
In the streets, bad, in the streets, bad.
Yeah, it's, 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 uh, you know, I know everybody's anxious to get them out there, it's all fast, but it is really one of the worst years, I'm gonna work on education things, you can maybe talk to Steve, um, at the firehouse about putting them out on that sign too, cause it's, you know, it's, it's dangerous, people try to swerve around them too, to, you know, and, and, uh, get them, you know, out near the street, but still keep them high, and make sure we won't get to them, um, there's a lot of industry this year. Um, and also the, just how they have the Christmas decorations, um, the, I think I set out the information, but just to update everybody, we've got, uh, the samples in, um, it was in early October and this, you know, we, the, the Christmas decoration committee selected the, uh, the.
When did, when did they get started in that, October you said?
No, it's when we, when I contacted this company, um, so we, we.
And that was when?
And according to the company at that time, in plenty of time.
Yes, it did, it, it does say, and I will bring it to the next.
We approved that budget in June.
I'll, I'll bring it to the magazine so Peter can film it, but it says right down there that it's three to four weeks at most.
Yeah.
Delivery. And you don't wanna wait, like, throw them in July and have them all, be all set, we want to look at those snowflakes together this year.
I had to pull teeth to get money in the budget.
Oh, no you didn't, not with me, not for those decorations, you didn't.
I think you said buy, unload, didn't you?
No, that's you.
He did.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's the bad news you said.
Uh, here we go. The decorations are, we, we got our samples because they provided us with a line drawing that was not wonderful to make sure that they fit, cause the new fixtures that they're, or the decorations that they're looking, they were looking at go around the lights. Um, every, uh, illustration of them shows them around something like a glass globe rather than the traditional, like they call the pipe, the colonial pipe that we have. So I wanted to make sure that they fit the line drawing, the dimensions that they were giving me, didn't work. The gentleman at the sales, at the, uh, at the distributor said, best thing is get a sample of it, and I said, hey, well, we still have time, yeah, you, this will ship quick, we just have to have made, it's longer than fifteen seconds, isn't it?
All right. Just give us the bad news, all right?
Have made, anyway, they finally got here, we put them up, they look awesome, and when I said, and then when I checked them, I said, where are they? They sent me an email, said, we're very busy, and I said, yeah, I know you're really busy, you know, we still have plenty of time to order them, and she said, no way, we can't get them before Thanksgiving.
Hence.
Um, and so we are not getting the, those lights, but because.
Hence.
Trustee Abolito cares so much.
Oh.
Because he delayed.
There you go.
And getting it, we're gonna save twenty percent round because we're gonna order them in the spring and maybe we'll be able to get even more.
And there's absolutely no cost that you can put on, on those ugly lights, we had to look at this, this, this window.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to add that.
So we really can't get them?
No.
I want that lady's number.
I, no, I know, she, I believe.
Yeah, but we, we went by what they advertised and we had plenty of time.
And I called the, I called the gentleman.
Collins.
Down in Louisiana, that is a distributor. When I got the, the email back saying that.
Yeah.
Here's the tracking number, they're going out, Old Dominion Freight, here's the tracking number, I looked it up and said it was leaving from Marion, Indiana. I said, okay, I looked up Marion, Indiana, Christmas tree decoration, uh, producers or manufacturer, GP Industries, I think it was, it popped up, or GP Designs, I called up GP Designs and said, hey, can you give me these things any faster? They said, no, they don't wanna, I've already dealt with their distributor, they don't wanna take it away. I said, that's very nice of you, however, I don't think your distributor has done what they should have done to earn that kind of loyalty. We had a nice back and forth discussion, it was really nice, um, bottom line, I went over to somebody in probably February or March and saved twenty percent, um, which isn't insignificant, it's, it's, you know, it's probably about a hundred dollars, uh, I picked there about five hundred bucks a piece.
Try for fifty percent.
LED ones, what's that?
Try for fifty percent.
Oh, I, I will try to be as.
Give the number to Jerry and let him work his magic.
Yeah, so I, you know, I did, and they understand, they're a little bit improving things, I made some suggestions and better drawings or have some unlit samples that somebody